Councilmember Beckman is absent. Councilmember Mongan here. Councilmember Azio.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lee.
Here.
And Mayor Cassisa.
Here. If we could stand and salute the flag, please.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, when a nation under God invincible with liberty and justice for all.
And if this, I remember, go ahead and open the meeting up for public comment. This gives anybody from the public opportunity to speak. Your time is limited, three minutes. Is anything that is not related or is on the agenda? If you're in person, you just step on it to the podium. And if you're zooming in, if you can just raise your hand, please.
Yes, hi. My name is Susan Windman, and I'd like to make a comment regarding the Tamalpais Avenue, the overcross over 101. And there's a reason why I'm giving my comments to the town council. I just feel that I'd like to address them to you. First of all, and I've done a bunch of, I've had a bunch of thoughts about this for actually several, several years. First of all, I wanted to mention that about an option that involves Marin Transit. I feel I've noticed, and I look at also some of the development proposals going forward for housing and such. There used to be a bus line, a little bus line that went out Paradise. And since, and then it was stopped for whatever the reason. I think that it's a really good time to bring that back. I think it's badly needed and not, I don't know exactly where that bus line went, but I think a bus line that went out at least to Aegis, Corder Madera, and that also involved both of your shopping centers. It could somehow make and go over the Tamalpais, overcross, and maybe even hook into Larkspur Landing. You have some really incredible shopping centers, and you've had a lot of growth now seen as older growth on the east side of Corder Madera, out kind of to the south. And you're going to have growth on this side. I think it's a real opportunity. I think also in regard to this overcross project, maybe it might circumvent some of the reasons for that, for that overcross project. And getting to the overcross project, since I don't have all evening, I wanted to mention that's, I'm a transit rider, and I've been a transit rider for years and years since I was a little kid. I also drive. But the proposals, I looked at them, it was a little bit difficult to understand. There was no side drawings and such, but the long and short is both of the land on either side, it's really beautiful. And it also is, part of it is marshland and such, but it's absolutely beautiful. And they're big swaths of land. I would hate to see these big, huge ramps or whatever. Why can't there be, if you're talking about some additional overcrossing, why can't it be something like what you have here? That goes across the freeway, that kind of incorporating what already exists, the go-arounds maybe, or maybe have it look like what you have at Larkspur Landing with where the railroad is for a path. I would, I think that there's an opportunity to do more. And lastly, they're, one of the proposals talked about a limited.
I'm sorry, you're limited to three minutes.
What's that?
You're limited to three minutes.
Okay, so it just stopped. Can I finish my sentence and sit down or?
All right, if you can just make it like a three-second sentence, go ahead.
Okay, don't forget about the northbound Highway 101 bus pad. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Jim Robinson, 25 Ash, Corder Madera. I wanted to comment on the police log. For the past three or four years, the council members and residents have been able to receive an e-version of the police log, which was very helpful to us to understand what activities were occurring in our neighborhood, particularly in Madera Gardens where I live. This service was terminated in February this year, and no notice was given to the residents as to why it was terminated. Upon inquiry, found out that there are some legal requirements of the Central Marin Police, and it had to be modified and modified in non-electroversion, but modified in a version that's now available only at the Central Marin Police Station. So if a resident wants to find out what's going on in the police department, we have to go down to the Central Marin Police Department to get a copy of that log and review it. I did that today, and this is the first month, I believe, that it was published. It's about that thick. It's about the size of my mother's Betty Crocker cookbook, I think. And in that book, if you want to find the activities, they're based on shift and also based on day. So you're looking at not what's happening in San Anselmo, or what's happening in Larkspur, what's happening in Corder Madera. You really have to spend quite a bit of time to try to go through that log to see what is happening in your neighborhood. I think that it's archaic. I think it's not transparent. I think it really kind of beckons back to the day and time where you had to come to City Hall in Corder Madera to get your council packet at five o'clock because you didn't have your website, you didn't have your electronic version. I think that the town of Corder Madera has an excellent electronic version of their agenda. I think I compliment you on your website. Information is easy to find. It's available. It's also a reminder to us that when we receive that via email, if we forget to look at something. And that was the advantage of having the police log in a weekly email fashion and form. And I don't know what the legal issues are related to it. In review of the, of the previously provided weekly report, I don't recall any names. There are no addresses, any information that should, would be appropriately redacted, was redacted. I think it's a simple summary. There are some issues with staffing. We were told by the Central Marin Police they don't have staffing available to provide this service anymore. I would like for the town to reconsider that and consider that it's important for us residents to know what our police department's doing, what issues are happening with our neighborhoods so we can be available to respond and be mindful of what our responsibilities are within our own neighborhoods. Thank you for listening.
Thanks for your comments. Appreciate it. And there's nobody else in person that's going at the podium. And we have one raised hand. It's a 510 area code with no name. Can you bring them over, please? Thanks. Hi, are you there?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. And again, you have three minutes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Steve Harris, and I am a field representative from the NorCal Carpenters Union at Local 35. And I am speaking here today to talk to you about ensuring the future of our construction industry and your community. You can do that by ensuring responsible developers and contractors not only paying living wages, but also provide health care, apprenticeship programs, and hire locally. Without these standards, the men and women in our communities cannot afford the basic things in life, the medical needs of their families, and spend too much time in other areas for work rather than with their loved ones. We, as a community and a council, need to make sure we build the workforce of tomorrow. I look forward to continuing this conversation with each of you and in the near future. Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Appreciate the comments. And with that, I don't see any other hands raised. Do we have any written comments or email comments?
Yes, we do. Can we just one second? Let me. So we have a comment from Mr. James Jordan. Let me just start the timer. He states, "It is my opinion that for the past year, the Corder Madera Town Government has engaged in an unfair and deceptive effort to favor the installation of an artificial turf field sports facility in the town park. I think the town's government plan to install an artificial turf field in the town park is continuing. The environmental and health consequences of this could be harmful to the community. The only valid indicator of the opinions of Corder Madera residents was shown in the results of the 2021 ETC Institute Town Survey that were reported in autumn 2021. 685 households of town residents responded to the survey. ETC Institute stated, "The overall results for a sample of 685 surveys have a precision of at least plus or minus 3.6% at the 95% level of confidence, end quote, of representing the opinions of town residents. Those results showed that all-weather artificial turf fields was not identified as a priority need by the town citizens. All-weather artificial turf fields was ranked number 20 on the list of unmet needs, number 12 on the list of most needed facilities and amenities, and number 18 on ETC Institute's priority investment rating. ETC Institute also reported that 80.8% of survey respondents are satisfied or very satisfied with town park athletic fields. Despite these findings, the town government has continued to identify as a top priority the installation of an artificial turf sports field in the town park. I think that the town government's distorted actions that followed the town survey, including the two small telephone quote-unquote focus groups and two brief quote-unquote last chance online public meetings, and the anonymous manipulated online quote-unquote poll/survey are not valid indicators of the opinions of town residents. The Parks and Recreation Commission, the Parks and Recreation Department, oh, sorry, and Parks and Recreation Department were going to prepare the new Parks and Recreation Master Plan. However, it was announced at the town council meeting on October 3, 2022, that this task has been outsourced to a private company named MAC5, parentheses, with involvement of a company named RHAA, at a top, at a cost of up to $74,935. I wonder if it was appropriate that the Parks and Recreation Commission was not given the opportunity to vote at this meeting, at its meeting on September 26, 2022, on whether the town should enter into a contract with MAC5 and RHAA before the town council voted on the question. David Ross, Senior Project Manager at MAC5, stated at the town council meeting that participation by members of the public will not be allowed during this company's work on the project. I think that the exclusion of the public, and that's three minutes. We have uploaded the rest of Mr. Jordan's comments on the website, and they're included in the agenda. And then we have another public comment. Let me just read it off my phone here. Okay. Oops, sorry. Okay, and this is from Joel de Vilbes. He says, "I want to speak out in favor of improving our town park fields in natural drought/resistant grass with proper drainage. The youth teams of Corder Madera deserve a better playing surface when, better playing surface than what exists there today. I also want to express my strong opposition to plastic turf. Some may call this artificial turf, synthetic turf, or all-weather turf, dot, dot, dot. It is plastic. Plastic turf, not just chrome rubber infill, but also the blades and the backing contains PFAS chemicals, otherwise known as quote-unquote forever chemicals because they don't break down in the human body. These chemicals have the insurance industry very concerned, and they should have parents concerned as well. Plastic turf creates microplastics. This is terrible for our environment and our local wildlife, especially when it is next to tidal waterways. Plastic turf will reflect surface temperatures of 170 degrees on a 100-degree day. In an already dire California heat emergency, this would only add to our problem with climate change and heat. Plastic turf increases flooding risk for our community. Plastic turf decreases biodiversity. I suggest that the town take the lead, like other municipalities have done, by instituting a quote-unquote no artificial turf field policy. Find ways to lead this drought-resistant turf, water retention, reclaimed water uses, and proper drainage. Please do not install plastic in the crown jewel of Corder Madera. I believe our kids and future generations will regret it if we do." Thank you. And let me just refresh in case we have additional. We do not have additional emailed public comments.
Thanks. With that, I'll go ahead and close public comment, and we'll move to presentation. We have one presentation, I think, tonight is Park and Rec Night because you also have a business item. You're back again. It's a review of 2022 community events, summer program, summer programming in Corder Madera Summer Camp by Ashley, our Park and Rec Director, and Tim, our Recreation Program Manager. I'll take it away.
Thank you, Mayor and Members of Council. Let's load it up. I have a sensitive mask on here. Okay, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you tonight and share what we've been accomplishing this summer regarding our community events, our summer programming, and Corder Madera Summer Camp. I'm Ashley Howell. I'm your Parks and Recreation Director, and this is our Recreation Program Manager, Tim Berry. So we're going to be tag teaming on this one. Okay, first off, our community events from January to September, we had the Twin Cities Egg Hunt, which was a collaboration with Larkspur Recreation. We had an outdoor family dance party. That also included a plein air painting event. And plein air is when artists come and they paint outdoors. So they had about four hours during that day to paint, and then they showed off their work to the crowd that came for the dance party. The dance party also included food, and everything was free. Fourth of July, we had our participation. We helped support the children's activities in Town Park. And then we hosted two movie and music nights in the park, one over at Town Park and one at Cove Park. Again, all free. The only thing on this list that was not free is the big band dances that resumed in May, and those are $20 per person for entry. Summer programming, we have contracted enrichment camps. We had all sorts of sports, Kinder Readiness, Marvelous Engineering with Lego, Enhanced Engineering, Art with Miss Matthews, Amazing Science Camp Catalyst, Tennis, Pokemon Engineering, Lego, Hoop It Up Basketball, Carpentry, and Skateboarding. Of those, the logistics participation revenue, the dates that we captured are June 13 through August 12. Classes were held at Town Park, Neal Common School, the Cove School, Community Center, and the Dance Studio. Total revenue from all these contracted programs was $63,600. And the average split with our contracted instructors is 70, 30, 70% goes to the instructors. And then participation total was 260 campers in those contracted enrichment camps. And the breakdown by residential demographics is 158 of those participants were from Corder Madera, 59 for Larkspur, 42 from other areas in Marin County, and one from non-Marin area. And I wanted to kind of address the transition that we've had from summer day camp program from the former summer playground, so 2019 and before. And then we had two years during COVID when we were operating under restrictions based on the county and the pandemic, where we named it Corder Madera Day Camp. We had to reduce the number of participants that we could have, reduce the ratio of counselors to campers. And then to this year, the last summer of 2022, we changed it again to Camp Parks and Rec with Corder Madera, Camp Corder Madera. And that was with the onset of Tim. So that was Tim's first year running the summer camp program and bringing extensive experience in the summer camp and day camp background. So he applied what he knew, as well as closely working with all of our counterparts in local agencies throughout Marin. Now I'm going to turn it over to him. Oh, sorry, history of evolution. I want to just start first. So again, summer playground, what we've been hearing, some of the feedback is that residents or past participants, the positives were flexibility and the low and low registration fee. Some of the negatives were some supervision concerns, and then lack of structure and revenue at the end of it. In 2019, the summer playground report from our then-director, Shanott, of the program, the program was from 7:30 AM to 6:30 PM. They had 32 counselors. Their revenue was $147,719. Expenses and supplies and staff were $142,119. So the net was $5,600. Attendance that year was 240, and their breakdown was 64 for Corder Madera, 21 Larkspur, 146 for Marin County, and 10 from residents from non-Marin County. So you can see the difference of, we were really, that program was really serving a lot of Greater Marin County. Some things that we thought that could factor into that was that it was a great opportunity for people driving and living in other locations and working in this area, dropping their kids off on the way or bringing them to a camp program that was closer to where they worked. And then also some of the changes that we've seen. So they had 241 campers, and we'll go into what we had in this last summer. But the market has changed a lot with summer camps in general. With the onset of COVID, we've had a lot more specialty camps come up. So the market's pretty saturated, as well as the amount of enrichment contract classes that, and camps that we've offered. So we've actually saturated our own summer camp programs as well. That was also during the time that Super Cool Summer School is being operated by Larkspur Recreation, and they also resumed this last year and was in a decreased capacity. Now it's Tim's turn.
Thank you. Like I said, I'm Tim Berry. I'm the Recreation Program Manager. I came in and kind of revalued a camp. We changed name, kind of remitted to call Camp Corder Madera. Basic camp setting, we've had a traditional, we were hosted, Neal Common's campus, right on campus, first kids were there after school, arts and crafts, cooking projects, special events, hired local part-time staff, had a very robust CIT program, and tried to bring a basic core camp back to the area. Kind of looked at what other cities had done, or towns had done, and kind of bringing back a centralized day camp for the kids in Corder Madera. Logistics participation revenue, basically ran one-week sessions from June 20 through August 7. We had to cancel two sessions due to low enrollment. We actually looked at other camps we offered in the surrounding cities, and there was a huge drop-off in enrollment in those two weeks. Basically, everybody could go places again. COVID was kind of settling down, people wanted to get away, summer school was over. So overall, in the general Marin area, people were not even in camps that week. They were taking off and going on vacation before they'd be back to school, which makes complete sense. Total revenue was $29,000 brought in. We'll talk a little later about a grant that we did for the Larkspur-Corder Madera School District. Net revenue of $4,500. And then our breakdown of participation total, we had 144 campers, 92 Corder Madera, 35 Larkspur, 15 Marin County, and two non-Marin County residents. In late April, early May, the Larkspur-Corder Madera School District came to us and asked, hey, you know, we really need an after-school program. They were starting up their summer school program again after COVID. They really identified some students who had fallen behind coming out of COVID and said, how can we support, how can we collaborate? How can we make this work for both the kids who are in the program now, after-school component? We were able to provide them an after-school, a half-day program, 11:30 to 5:00. They went, picked them up in the classroom, walked them over, fed them a snack, and kind of kept them after school until 5:00 o'clock. We had 33 total students participated. All these students were targeted, low-income, had fallen behind by the district. We have had a couple recap meetings regarding the district. Every time we meet, say, these parents would never be able to be in this program. They really need an after-school component because they need to be in care in the morning, and they needed this after-school component to basically make it a full day for them, the people were working. So we saw a great energy from these kids. They've been in school, they wanted to come and participate camp, and we really enjoyed the experience, and we'll be looking forward again next year to partner with the district again. Last of scholarships, so our scholarships all come from local community groups who donate for our summer camp program. The Corning Foundation gave us pledged up to $3,000 for us so far for the summer. We only used $2,200 of it. Part of our Lions Club gave us $1,500, and the Corning Women's Improvement Club gave us $3,000. Those are for those other students who needed full daycare or needed morning care, afternoon care, who couldn't support or couldn't afford to pay for camp. These organizations have had a long relationship with the town of basically supporting and donating so that these kids can come to the after-school program. We gave out 10 total scholarships throughout the summer, five Corder Madera residents, three Larkspur residents, two Marin County, and no, none from outside of Marin County. So kind of a shift from what it's been in the past. But these families, especially who, you know, weren't in summer school, still needed care, applied for these scholarships to have some summer camp for them during the summertime.
An additional summer programming that we offered through Corder Madera Football Club, our summer camps for soccer. I'm listing spring clinics in here just because I wanted to show the total participation and the revenue that came in with that. From March 14 through April 28, they did take a week off during spring break. K through 1st was 96 participants, 2nd through 8th, 141, and competitive program had 210, with a total participation of 447 and a revenue of $124,700. Summer camps for the soccer program, they had age groups and goalkeeper-striker clinic. The goalkeeper and striker clinic from June 13, the week of June 13, had 14 participants, and the week of June 20 had 14. Age groups from 15 to 13, again, those are divided between two different age groups. Not all 15 to 8, 5 to 8, 13 together. But the week of June 13, 144, and then the week of June 20, 64. Again, this program also felt that that was the vacation week that was hit. Once the summer school ended, they saw kind of a mass exodus in town. Everybody's delayed vacations started coming before school started. And then summer camp total for soccer was 236 participants with a revenue of $65,727. Another example of how we were offering so many programs, again, saturating our own camp market. But again, a greater number of people that were serving within our community of those 236 participants, we had 130 of those Corder Madera residents, 68 from Larkspur, 29 from Marin County, and nine from outside of Marin County. And again, in this total, spring clinics are not included. Combined participation in youth camps, so that is our enrichment camps, our day camp, and soccer camp. We had, we served 640 campers, 380 of those from Corder Madera, 162 from Larkspur, 86 from Greater Marin County, and 12 from outside of Marin County. Summer programming that consisted of contracted adult enrichment classes. We had pickleball, tap, watercolor, Monday fun and fitness, yoga for seniors, senior imbalance, intermediate bridge, bingo, social walks, ARP, smart drivers courses, and the congregate grab-and-go meals. We had 200 participants in those programs, 61 from Corder Madera, 48 from Larkspur, 65 from Marin County, and 26 from outside of Marin County. And included in those, not including the participation numbers there are the congregate meal participants, which are typically averaged from 25 to 30 people per week on Wednesdays, and then the Tuesday social walk participants are not included in that. Media events and activities that we have planned from October to December for the rest of this year. We have pumpkin carving dance night, which is this Friday, family roundup dance, which is on Saturday, the community afrenda, Thanksgiving Day Turkey Trot. We have an art exhibition returning. Big band dances will continue. The Giving Tree, the Coat Drive is coming back. We have a gingerbread house workshop. Letters to Santa program is returning, and the Holiday Home Decorating Contest. There's a lineup from our fall/winter activity guides. So we have the event calendar added to our printed material and the digital version that's available online and via email. Again, this week, we've got the pumpkin carving dance night and the family roundup dance. We have our Thanksgiving Day Turkey Trot. Not at 8:30. The afrenda, warm coat, and the Giving Tree. We have the Holiday Light Tours for seniors, and that is thanks to Cheryl Longinotti and her Pedaling Power. Letters to Santa, Holiday Home Decorating Contest, and then the Gingerbread House Decorating Workshops. And all those are advertised online as well as in our activity guides. Are there any questions?
Any questions from council members?
So what's the cost now for summer camp per child?
For one week, it's $350 for one.
One week is $1,500. What was it three years ago?
I can't speak to it. I wasn't here.
You can't speak to that either. We can look it up and get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
A couple of questions on Bob on the $350. What does that break down to an hourly basis, do you know? Now, how many hours do they go? Would it break down like $10 an hour?
It's less than that.
I think it's about $9 an hour.
Eight and a half, $9 an hour, yeah.
Okay, I think we've got that in the scholarship agenda item later.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess I'm getting ahead of myself. And then are you looking, I may be getting ahead on this one, too. Are you looking at any changes for 2023 for next year? Because it sounds like you said several times that you kind of oversaturated yourself or the market. Are you, what kind of changes are you looking at?
Yeah, right now, sure, thank you very much for bringing that up. Right now, we're exploring the opportunity to, again, change the format because one of the things that we hear from our community members and past participants in this traditional summer playground program was the flexibility and not being, not signing up for the week session, which is the traditional summer camp program in our industry. So maybe formatting a little bit more like our current childcare after-school program. I'm in our industry, um, so maybe formatting a little bit more like our current um, childcare after-school program. So that's going to be one thing that we're going to be um, be trying out this year and seeing how that that works. Um, the the main thing that we want to communicate, communicate to our residents and our participants is that. We are not set on a a format. We are constantly evolving our programs and responding to our community needs and feedback, so. We're happy to keep changing it up until we we meet the most expectations we can.
How does a three fifty compare to other summer camps in Marin? Uh, in other cities or is it kind of like apples to oranges?
Um, it's pretty comparable. I think the big difference is we didn't do any field trips or some of the other camps are even more expensive. They do field trips for the bus cost admission, but they're pretty comparable to all the other surrounding cities.
And one more, you had a slide up there where I think you had like um, it was enrichment camps. It was everything you did during the summer. Do you know what the total revenue for that was and then what the net was?
I don't have the net on that because when we do the enrichment classes, um, it'll take us a lot longer to go through and um, take out all the contracted payments. But we can, we're happy to do that and provide that in a supplemental report to council.
Okay, thanks. Uh, any other questions? Go ahead, Mira.
Hi guys, thanks for this good report. Um, it's great that we're providing this service to the community. Um, one question I had, you talked about a couple of the summer programs getting canceled because of low enrollment. And I'm just sort of curious in general, like you had a lot of the numbers up there for how many people participated. Were we, you know, can you speak to generally, were we like? Full? Were we just over that threshold where you didn't need to cancel it or, you know, sort of? How how were attendance numbers?
So I would say it's camp to camp. For someone like a camp corner, we can go with lower enrollment. We're not paying contractor. For certain products that had a percentage split number of people to make the class go, so they did cancel classes because they were low enrollment. Uh, where we have a little more flexibility in the camp because we have part-time staff, not contracted. Uh, and some of the camps were full. Uh, kids carpeting was full at the seams, skateboarding was full. So all of those were really full. Some of those were just barely making the minimum. But overall, we did see that those last, those weeks when summer school was out and people wanted vacation. Overall, people just kind of pulled back and did the vacation, which we understand. Everybody wants to get away to somewhere they can before school starts. Um, but again, trying to plan that in for next year.
And when we cancel a session like that, are we able to kind of? Not pay the staff that we had lined up or do we end up sort of taking a loss on that week?
We don't pay the staff that week. We took that time to prepare actually for the childcare program coming in the school year. So we did deeply in one of our classrooms we don't use. Kind of did a grant, an inventory and kind of what organized everything we need to get ready for the start of the school year.
And another thing, when uh, one of the programs was canceled, whether it be a contract class or whether it be the in-house um, Camp Quarter Madera. Is when we see the registration going down, we reach out to all the, all of the um, registered, registered families and we provide alternatives. So if we have another class that has availability and we, usually we know the participants, but we can say, you know. This class, this class and this class is available this week because we recognize that people are signing up not only for their their children's um, stimulation and interest. But also for the supervision capacity of it. So we make sure that to provide, to provide them options.
Great. And one last question, when we do classes or camps, do we, do we ask people to fill out surveys at the end?
We haven't. Um, it's something that I had wanted to do and we were told from our industry that it's kind of a passe. But if uh, if it's something that we want to collect feedback on and data, we're happy to do that. We have the the instruments available.
Okay, thank you.
Bob, go ahead. Yeah. My recollection of what's cost is three or four years ago was eventually less than this. I'm on the community foundation board and we provide money for scholarships. And I also noticed you went from two forty-one to a hundred and forty-four attendees from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-two. And was that just COVID or is part of that cost? I mean, we, I want to make sure that we are servicing the needs of this community and we are providing everything that we need because this was a. And I think it still is and a really important thing we are providing for the community here for summer care. And I want to make sure we're still doing that and we are not pricing people out of the market. So that's why I'm asking these questions. So. Do you have any more insight on that or?
Sure, I I don't think that we're pricing anybody out of the market by any means, but if we are, or people are getting that sentiment. That's also why we're bringing to you the scholarship program to review because we would love to address that and make it, uh, you know, reduce any barriers for entry and participation.
So I um, as a part, I uh, with, if if ultimately the numbers contracted for the quarter Madera specific. Like summer camp and you showed the soccer numbers, which is in tandem, did that all, like, you have the numbers? Did you show the numbers for the earlier years in relationship to camp? You know, if it was COVID that caused it, you would, I would think it would happen across the board. Did you?
Um, well, I think the factor that we haven't um, explored, just because we don't have a lot of the data handy. Is to look at the number of enrichment classes and camps that we offered pre-COVID. I think if we look at, if we do a study of the enrichment registration camps. Um, two thousand, in two thousand nineteen and we compare it with the participation in, say, summer playground at that point. And we see what was offered, I think we'll, we'll reflect on is that there was a lot less in the market available. For our, for our residents to choose. Um, we didn't have a lot of the enrichment classes go, um, which means that the advertising is usually um. Not providing people enough opportunity to register. Um, so that's what we've kind of seen historically with, with the department. Um, and now that we have so many more contract classes and camps that are going as well as offering the soccer, the soccer camps. Because those summer camps for soccer actually started recently. I think this is the second year they've done it. Um, so again, we're, we're saturating our own market for opportunities for summer camps. And I think that wrapping up the the total and looking that we served over six hundred uh, participants in our summer programming in general. I think that reflects that we're, we're doing a pretty good job at providing opportunities.
So, so, so the summer camps for soccer are only two years is what I'm hearing. So there is no comparables.
No, not pre-COVID.
As far as the numbers, got it.
My, my question was about the summer camp. I think you said two forty-one in two thousand nineteen and two twenty, twenty twenty-two is a hundred and forty-four. Does that drop off because we increased the cost so much?
No, it's because we increased all the other options to to register for. That's my opinion, but we won't know until unless we went out and asked all past participants. Uh, that used to be in summer playground.
So it sounds like there was a shift. People before may have been putting their kids in summer camp where this year. Instead of putting them in summer camp, they were putting in enrichment programs because they had that option to do.
There were more options.
Okay.
Right, I think it's the total of both the enrichment classes and the summer camp this year is, I don't know what the total was. You, you had both numbers. I don't, I don't know what the total was. It was up about two, two fifty or so.
And also beyond what we're offering for summer programming opportunities for our youth. The Greater Marin and Sleepaway camps, all of those have resumed. There's a lot more options in general for summer programming opportunities.
And those camps usually cost more?
Uh, away camps or contract camps generally because they're specialty.
Okay. Any other questions?
And then how are we priced to other similar summer camp, day camps and other?
For the day camp, we are usually at average or just below average.
Or Marin County.
For Marin County. That's usually where we try to to locate ourselves. Same with childcare.
Is that pricing included in the part of the fee schedule? I can't remember.
Um, summer playground used to be provided in it and since we haven't um, settled on a model yet, we have not included the day camp in the fee schedule. There's an asterisk that we, once we have set up, settled on a program that we want to have those fees included in that as well.
So that'd be included next year when you come back to us on the fee schedule?
If next year, if the, if next year we think that we're settled on it, absolutely. Yes.
Any other questions? Okay, uh, with that, I'll go ahead and open it for public comment. Anybody wish to speak on this uh, topic, please um, raise your hand. I don't see any hands raised, any email comments?
Uh, we do not have any email comments.
Thanks. With that, I'll go ahead and close public comment. Any other comments from council members? Okay, um, go ahead.
Wasn't really a question, but um, so I have three children and uh, we do use the Parks and Rec. Department programs, right? And there fundamentally has been a change. Um, so I can speak directly to my own experience with that is. Yes, the original summer camp was cheaper. It was very well attended because of the cost. But it was understaffed and basically my children complained about not being able to do all the activities. And the activities were not specific to their interest. It was a generality to serve the greater populace. And so my children did not enjoy it at that price point. What I'm, they did do skateboarding this year, year. They did do soccer. They do specific classes that are a week long also. And around the same price or maybe even a little bit more, but it it's specific to their desires. And so therefore our children are are better satisfied through, through those, whether it's, you know, through a private contractor, the, the town. It doesn't matter to my kids. So that's a little bit what's happening and and then it's the age groups, you know, my kids are getting older. So it could be that the younger kids, that general kind of uh, play and access still is available. Um, but that's my personal experience with it and 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 like, you know, that, that concept of, of. It's still serving, even though those numbers are doing something different, it's still service the same need for me as a resident. That my children are doing something productive and active during the day in the summers. So hopefully that helps in sharing that. I don't know, but.
That helps. Um, and my point was just. This has historically been a program that served a lot of kids in this community, lots of kids from lots of different income levels. And I really want to make sure that we are not pricing them out. That's, that's my concern. That's why I'm asking all these questions because that's one of the things we've always been able to do in this town that other towns haven't done. And I've really been pleased with the way we've been able to, and would see these numbers coming down like this. My concern is that we are taking a lot of people out because they can't afford it. Even though we have scholarships, people always like to apply for scholarships. There's not that many of them. Um, so I just want to make sure we're not.
Right, it was, it competitively, it was, it was far less uh, earlier. It was cheaper. And so that's why it was more attended and it probably was attended from, from people outside of Core Madera as well because it was the most cost competitive.
It was, it was, but most of the people were from Core to Madera and I just want to make sure we are providing. As Parks and Rec, we're providing a service to the community.
Yeah.
And I don't want to, I want to make sure we're not pricing people out.
And it, it, it sounds like from what you're saying, there was a shift where if they didn't have those enrichment camps this year, you may have just stuck your, put your kids.
I would not have, like, at, at, at the time, we tried it and it was, it, it, it didn't service. My personal, but that's why I didn't want to talk about my personal needs versus the needs of the community because it did have huge attendance. And it was incredibly effective for a lot of people that were happy to have that at that price point. So I'm happy to explore what's best for the broader community. I'm just telling you like what's happening in the metrics there, so.
I guess the thing, it sounds like Park and Rec is giving much more alternatives because if they didn't offer those enrichment classes. Your kids may have been in a camp but not in Quarter Madera, could have been somewhere else that fit what they were looking for, like skateboarding and whatever.
Absolutely. Those are, those are services that are offered by other parks and rec departments. And sometimes we've gone over to Mill Valley or up to San Rafael or wherever it takes to provide the services that my children need, right? And so that is, it is a larger regional market when it comes to, to children's activities. And so understanding what ours need or where our niche is as a community is an important discussion. But it, it like, like they stated, I think, you know, it's an ongoing, changing environment um, and culture in town. And with community in general and children and um, it's, it's, it's this kind of dialogue, but even broader. To help establish that and make it the most effective program, so that's.
It's almost like skateboard and Lego, whatever could be popular this year and next year for whatever reason. Either kids are moving into a different age group. It may not be as popular next year, but there's no way that you would know that until you get to that point.
It's maybe there's, like, once again, that, you know, uh, so there, there are, maybe there's consultants or like, maybe that is ultimately. The, the benefit of a director is to kind of anticipate and have this broader network to establish what those trends are and help get in front of it. The question is, is, do you want the ownership of those decisions before or after the fact? And like, how do we encourage and enable them and sponsor them to, to be able to enact that and make it effective? And and I think that's what we're all kind of discussing.
I just, as I said, I just want to make sure that we are continuing to service the needs of the community. That's what we're supposed to do as a town, as Parks and Rec Department. We did it before, it, it looks like in a higher level and I want to make sure we continue to providing services to everybody in the community.
Absolutely.
And we need to, and because it was a, it was a very well-attended program. I want to make sure it stays that way and we continue to provide that service.
I'd like to continue to focus on the, the fact that we serve six hundred and forty campers through all of our programs that we offered this last summer. And if we do compare the twenty nineteen summer playground um, participation with the twenty twenty-two Camp Port of Madera. Um, we had two hundred and forty-one for summer playground, but only sixty-four of those were quarter Madera. If we combine the twenty-one from Larkspur, that's eighty-five. Everybody else was, a hundred and forty-six was Marin in general and ten was non-Marin. Um, so if we're comparing sixty-four quarter Madera served by summer playground in twenty nineteen to ninety-two residents of Port of Madera served this last summer. I think that's important to show that we're serving our local community. Yes, we want to create programs that draw in uh, people from outside of our community. Um, but we do, we are doing our best to serve um, our own residents. Uh, with a well-structured, well-supervised program that people can go to and know that their children are going to be safe and have a good time. And if um, the traditional day camp program doesn't work for that, that child, because every, every child has different interests. And so the opportunity to provide special interest contract camps with instructors that are essentially experts in their, their discipline. Um, is what we like to do to balance so that we can make sure that we're always addressing the, the evolving needs and interests of our, of our young, young participants.
Any other comments? Go ahead.
If someone wanted to do like, say, the soccer camp, which I know is just half-day, but then they wanted care for their kid in the afternoon, would they be able to do that or is it kind of an either or?
Yes, we even walk and pick them up.
Amazing, okay, yeah.
Same with our after-school program. All the after-school classes, our, our instructors um, have our, our staff go and pick them up and drop them off. It's, it's a great service. Hopefully people are, are taking advantage of that.
For sure. And I just want to note on the cost point, as a parent who uses summer camps, three hundred and fifty for a week of full days. Is a really good price. Um, I don't know if, when you said average or a little bit below average, if you were looking at the hours. Because that is something that varies a lot. A lot of camps will be, will end shorter or be a shorter day, even if it's the same amount, so.
Um, we like the nine dollar an hour average.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other comments? Thanks, appreciate it. Good discussion. Uh, with that, we're going to go ahead and move to the consent calendar. These are items that are in normal course of business. They've been previously discussed. Uh, they can be approved by a single motion. Any member of the town council, staff or public may request that item be removed for further discussion. With that in mind, is there anybody from the council, staff or public that wishes to have a item removed for discussion? I don't see anybody from council staff, no hands raised, no emails. Uh, with that, I'll go ahead and close that part out and I'm looking for a motion to prove a consent items for A through four G.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
But that, uh, no further discussion, I'd call for the vote.
Councilmember Beckman is absent. Councilmember Mongan?
Yes.
Councilmember Ovasio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Cissé.
Uh, yes, we have no public hearings tonight. We'll move to business item six A, which Park and Rec is back on. This is the discussion and possible approval of the Quarter Madera Recreation Scholarship Program as recommended by the Parks and Rec Commission.
Right back to me. Alright, so I'm here tonight to discuss uh, the possible approval of the Quarter Mera Recreation Scholarship Program that's recommended by the Parks and Rec Commission. So, we are counsels asked to discussing, set our vote to approve the proposed Quarter Mera Recreation Scholarship Program, included as attachment one. As recommended by Parks and Rec Commission. Uh, and a little background, historically, the Quarter Mera Recreation Department has provided scholarship for residents of the Marin County to participate in department programs such as summer day camps. Childcare, youth classes and soccer. Annually, the department is awarded between eight and ten thousand dollars. These scholarships have been funded mostly by local community organizations such as the Quarter Mayor Community Foundation, Quarter Mayor Alliance Club, Quarter Mayor Women's Club. Quarter Mayor Divination Committee or just absorbed by the Park and Recreation Department. Over the past year, staff has continued to receive requests from families seeking financial assistance for summer day camp, childcare, youth classes and soccer. While preparing this initial program proposal for the Parks and Rec Commission, staff could not find record of, or record of council or commission having reviewed or approved. A formal scholarship program or application. Staff quickly developed a basic form and screening process to address the immediate requests submitted to for program registration in two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. During that timeframe, thirteen participants have received scholarships for fourteen thousand, six hundred dollars. Staff was announcing town council to review and discuss the proposed scholarship program recommended by the Parks and Rec Commission. The September twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two meeting, consider approving the proposed scholarship program as recommended by staff. The Parks Recreation always provided classes all throughout the year. These recreation programs and classes range from five dollars per class to over twelve hundred dollars per season, per session. Examples are listed here. Five dollars for classes for senior fitness, which a hundred percent of revenues paid to the instructor. Twenty-seven dollars for one day of aftercare, which is roughly from a nine, nine dollars an hour. Hundred and ten dollars a session for adult watercolor classes, hundred and sixties for one session of pickleball. Two hundred and seventy for one session of youth classes, two hundred and twenty-five for one session of quarter Mera FC Rex Soccer. Two hundred and fifty dollars for one week of full summer day camp, five hundred dollars one with a full daycare for childcare every day. The twelve hundred dollars for one season of quarter Mera FC competitive soccer, which runs about three months. On Monday, September twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two, staff presented the draft proposal program to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Commission reviewed and agreed to recommend to town council for consideration the draft program with modifications to include that eighty percent of available funds should be awarded to youth. And twenty percent should be awarded to adults. We discussed the the collaboration with law, law, government, the school district. This is a request by individual families for scholarships. Staff in the Larkspur Quarter Mary School District approached the Parks and Rec Department prior to summer twenty two regarding a partnership. Um, LCMSD staff request for the town to consider offering free half day afternoon summer camp trips of forty students who committed to attending the district's morning summer school at Neil Cummins Elementary School. LCMSD staff emphasized that most of these families identify would not be able to afford to attend the town summer camp and would therefore be likely able to attend summer school without the addition of the afternoon supervision. I can only stress this was a huge deal for those kids to be able to come into our program, otherwise they wouldn't attend summer school, would have fallen further behind. Uh, Parks and Recreation Staff approved a cost estimate of just under thirty thousand dollars for a maximum of forty children to attend a half day of camp during the summer school session. That amount for the request for partnership was right, was provided, provided a former manager Todd Cusamano for consideration. Town Manager Cusamano approved a thirty thousand dollar community grant in June of twenty twenty two. Parks and Recreation Staff support pursuing an opportunity to collaborate with the LCMSD to offer a similar program in twenty twenty three, as it was a positive influence for both participants, the district and the town. The collaboration made a possible thirty three students to attend summer school in the morning and attend summer camp in the afternoon. Uh, moving on to discussion, um, the last official census in twenty twenty recorded the average household income in quarter there is one hundred ninety three thousand two hundred sixty dollars with a poverty rate of four point eight seven percent. The median rental cost in recent years comes to two thousand seven fifty seven dollars per month, but the median home value is one point two million dollars. Staff recognized that statistically, there is a low percentage of quarter residents that may qualify or request financial assistance for certain programs offered by the Parks and Recreation Department. However, in the spirit of seeking greater diversity, equity and inclusion for the programs offered by the Parks and Rec Department, staff like to minimize any barriers to participation by introducing a quarter Mera Recreation Scholarship Program for council discussion and consideration. The goal of the Quarter Mary Recreation Department is to offer scholarships to low income families and adults in order for individuals to participate in recreation programming offered throughout the department. Staff research scholarship programs offered by the following local agencies, Fairfax, Larkspur, Mill Valley, Nevada, San and Selma and San Rafael, and draft you the attached document, attachment A, for your review and consideration. Uh, it's a summary of of all the requirements that all those towns had um, to benchmark kind of our program proposing tonight. Staff notes that cloud for any students' programs, program implemented would be available in both English and Spanish. Additional languages is obviously if requested. The program would be advertised on the town website, the Quarter Mary Larkspur School District, and wording be added to department marketing materials and registration forums to get the word out for people that we have a great program. Program requirements, the proposed program is consistent with the basic requirements of compared programs, attachment two. But it's different by allowing non residents to participate and offer scholarships to adults. The six agencies researched only Mill Valley allows non residents to apply for scholarships, only Nevada supports scholarship for adults for addition to youth. Sacrament's a quarter program will be open to youth and adult applicants as well, open to residents outside quarter Madera. Um, when we took a sample size, what we perceived in the past year, we received scholarship applications from all of Marin County, and that's why we kind of included this for your discussion tonight. Name of the programs reviewed, none of the programs reviewed provide scholarship support or subsidy towards indoor outdoor facility rentals or participation agency run events. At this time, Sacrament begins focus on implementing a program to support programming subsidy only. Due to the connectivity of quarter Mera Larkspur, staff proposes making quarter Mera Scholarship Program open to residents of both quarter Mera and Larkspur and students enrolled in Larkspur Quarter Mary Schools. Based on past requests, staff also asked the town council to consider allowing residents of Greater Marin County to qualify for scholarship assistance, considering a lower percentage of funding. In order to responsibly fairly review and grant scholarship requests, the following elements of a scholarship program were considered. Application and process, application of funds, distribution of funds and eligibility. After comparing scholarship programs offered by six neighbor agencies, staff recommends the following criteria for quarter Mera Scholarship Program. First and foremost, application, application, application process. All applicants must complete a scholarship application with full names for all family members in the household. Applications must be accompanied by current verification of eligibility and residency.
I don't know if you have to read through all the requirements.
Okay, you you back at me. If you want me to write against, you tell me.
I I think you just hit the highlights, because I think we all had a chance to read this and go through it.
So I would say the highlights for that's, but basically we're asking them to prove that where they live. That's pretty common. Um, I think allocation of funds is is an important one. Uh, we had decided that eighty percent of all funds would go to quarter Mary Larkspur and students who attend the school in her Larkspur District and twenty percent to greater Marin County, kind of obviously uh, fulfilling the needs of people who live in quarter Larkspur and the Marin County. Uh, the distribution of funds was from the county commission for the funds for eighty percent for the youth and twenty percent to adults. And then in part C, um, the funding, so you scholarship funding would be allocated rate of three hundred dollars per individual with a maximum of nine dollars per family. And the all scholarship be allowed allocated a flat rate of a hundred dollars per individual per year. Basically putting a cap so that one person couldn't dominate all of the sculpture funds, that it was spread out evenly, termite, sorry. You want a termite, sorry.
It's a sign.
It's a sign, right? Watch out. Um, eligibility, um, the highlight will be here is that we basically today, uh, we follow the California Department of Housing Community Development for a benchmark to figure what's very low income. Um, below that chart is the income quality card from Marin County for twenty twenty two for low income. So basically, anybody had to at least prove they were at least this income and below to qualify for a scholarship. For to be in the program. Uh, joint donations, like I said before, it's basically get rid of it, thank you.
That was good.
We reached out to local uh, community groups for summer programming. We've never actually reached out for year round programming. It's just been for summer camps in general. Uh, fiscal impact, obviously, right now, there's no fiscal impact. We are uh, basing on the donation we received in the past. Um, should town council wish to allocate additional funding to scholarship program, that would be different. Um, and we potential funding sources would be identified by town management. Uh, work plan falls under category one, just diversity, equity and inclusion. Uh, no impact right now. And then options, one, approve the quarter Mera Recreation Scholarship Program as recommended. Approve the corner Mera Recreation Program with modifications or provide additional stewardship to staff.
Thank you.
Sorry, it's a lot.
Let me add one thing is, um, the reason that we're bringing a more solidified uh, program, formal program for scholarships is that uh, we really want to have the transparency and we want to have a tool that we can actually go out and feel good about marketing. Not only sharing the opportunities for applying for scholarships, but also being able to reach out to um, a broader um, community for donations. It can be donation requests to um, groups outside of quarter Madera, it could be Larkspur, it could be greater beyond that. Um, it also can be individuals. When we were doing the after school programs, we had teachers at Neil Cummins that really wanted to pay for certain kids to attend the after school program because they didn't want them to have to leave. Um, and get picked up because I mean, they knew what that impact was to the family and the supervision. So I think the 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 ability to have a solidified approved um, program that we can um, broadly advertise um, would be really supportive for us. And we'd love to be able to develop this program more and grow it um, financially, so that we can offer more opportunities for participants.
Any questions from councilmembers? Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, and actually, Lorena, I got a question for you of all, sorry, I shouldn't, I normally like to tell staff members, I'm gonna ask them a question in a meeting before the meeting. But this just occurred to me. During COVID, we, I know the community foundation gave a lot of money to the town and the town put aside some money that we gave to residents who were renting and could not pay rent. You remember approximately how much that was? Because it was pretty substantial.
Um, somewhere around, I think, fifty thousand or more that got dispersed and we did two rounds of each for business and um, residents.
But a lot of that went to residents who could not pay rent.
Correct.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Um, just the um, a question about sharing it among family members, because I know you said three hundred max per individual, but nine hundred max per family. And then I saw in here, it's not transferable, but it can be shared among family members. So like, if a parent wants to let their child use the full nine hundred, that's allowed.
As long as they all qualify, yes. They have to meet the requirements and it's in full documentation, then yes.
Okay.
In recognizing that a lot of our applicants come from families that have more than two children, um, sometimes up to five. Um, so it's recognizing that sibling discounts can only gets you so far when you're going to programming. Um, so if we have a capacity that can be shared within a family member, family uh, unit.
And then just wondering, you know, anytime you're asking people for sort of documentation, and I understand the need to do that, but it it occurs to me, there could be sensitivities around that in terms of people being undocumented or concerns like that. And I just wonder if you've given any thought to how to address that.
Yeah, we actually, we actually had someone this uh, childcare this season. And basically, we left it up to staff scratching to basically work with the family if they can't produce documentation to give us something that proves that they are needing uh, scholarships. It's very easy with the district, we communicate with them. You you find out if they're on the low income or if they have reduced lunch or what they are to qualify for those scholarships. So basically, staff will work individually with each family to say, you can't produce this, you can't produce that. How do we make it so you still get a scholarship?
Right. The school district has been a great partner and advocate for this program. They've worked directly with um, families that they think that needed some assistance and that they thought would be good, good fits for the program. Um, and they actually, you know, worked with helping them fill out the applications and collecting the application, then actually provided us with the application.
Oh, great. Okay, thank you.
Um, I have a few. Um, resident versus non resident, non resident, that's everybody in Marin County?
Yes.
And we'd be the only town that's doing that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, because Mill Valley think they don't.
They have some limitations, yeah, within Marin.
Okay, so what's the right, what's the rationale behind providing scholarships to non residents? And the quarter we're combining quarter Mera Larkspur together, right?
Quarter Madera Larkspur and then students within the shared district are all, we're considering, we're advocating for consideration for residency. Um, if we look at the the past scholarship recipients, we have the breakdown from twenty nineteen, for just example of summer playground, um, where there were sixteen scholarships, um, uh, provided, five were quarter Madera, and then the rest were, uh, the other eleven were all non residents. Um, whereas this year, we really focused on um, having the ten, the recipients, and the five of those were quarter Madera, three from Larkspur. And only two are from Greater Marin County. So we recognize that a lot of non quarter Madera Larkspur residents, school students are applying to um, attend our programs and scholarship.
Okay, was there any consideration given to those non residents that are working in quarter Madera? As maybe like a preference type thing, since they're supporting our community by working in it, just out of curiosity.
We're, we're open to to whatever direction council would like to give.
Okay, and then um, are you looking also for thirty thousand again this year that was given to you last year?
The school district has already reached out to Tim to um, kind of refine the program and review um, the successes and maybe some areas for improvement from last year. Um, so that is something that we were hoping that uh, that will be continued this year.
Okay, and then I may miss it. I didn't see anything in here for the breakdown of ages. In other words, youth, I assume is under eighteen. Okay, I didn't see anything in here. It just.
Just going with the traditional model of zero to eighteen being youth.
Just.
Eighteen and over being adults in general.
Okay, and then was there any consideration to sixty five and old older that group as far as seniors that maybe are living off of just flat out social security and they're, they have limited income?
We wanted to include adults in general because we didn't want to exclude the middle age bracket. So we didn't want to exclude, say, an eighteen to sixty five range.
Okay, but could you, you could add that range, right? You could go eighteen, sixty four and then sixty five over?
You could, but right now it's included in the adult proposal.
Okay, and I have one question, maybe more directed towards Amy. In the application, which I know what you're saying about some park and rec discretion, but under like sources of income, at the end it says, et cetera. Are we okay with that language or is it just too broad? Because if it's that discretion or we open ourselves up for anything down the road? Because it's not, um, I just look at things more like, it's not in writing, do you know what I mean? So somebody could come in, we go, yeah, you were okay with this. But then somebody, there there could be a lack of consistency. I just want to make sure we're okay from a legal standpoint with the E T C part.
I mean, we could, we could change the language a little to other similar sources, something like that. I I mean, it's hard. I know you're trying to fit it on one form to make it easy to fill out, but um, I don't, I don't see a major problem, but we could tweak the language a little bit.
But I just want to make sure we're covered. Um, and again, we're looking at equality and also consistency across the board. Uh, I may have more, any other questions? Okay, with that, I'll go ahead and open up to public comment. Anybody who should speak on this topic, please raise your hand. Have you zoomed in? And did we get any email comments on this?
We do not have any email public comment.
Okay, thanks. Uh, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, Councilmember Beckman did submit um, some comments for this item. Um, and since he's, he's not here, we're just going to do the three minute um, procedure.
At a point of order.
And I did check with attorney.
Unless the chair would like to.
Is it long?
No, um, it'll be less than. Okay, so I'll go ahead and start the time. Um, so this is what he said. First, I want to give a huge thank you to our Parks and Rec staff and commission for formalizing a scholarship program that puts our department's incredible programs and services within reach for all our residents, regardless of income. These programs and classes are public services and price should not be a barrier for community members who want to enjoy them. I am excited to support the program as proposed with the following comments. I strongly support continuing our collaboration with Larkspur Quarter Madera School District for subsidized after after summer school childcare, which allows cash strapped families to make sure their kids don't fall behind in school. I support staff's recommendation to make scholarships available to Larkspur residents and the Larkspur Quarter Madera School District students outside of Quarter Madera, as well as the idea of making some scholarship amount available to all Marin residents. The staff recommendation is eighty percent of funding to youth and twenty percent to adults. I would like us to consider also awarding a minimum amount to seniors, many of whom are on a fixed income. Let's please make sure we are using all town channels to advertise these scholarships, including social media like Nextdoor, the Corner Madera Chronicles and the Reader Board. Looking forward, I would suggest that we continue to reduce barriers for residents to access our programs and services and that the equitable provision of public services to be prioritized over cost recovery. We are a government agency and we collect taxes for the purpose of funding public programs and services. I think we should discuss pivoting toward looking at Parks and Rec as a regular service funded through tax revenue and not something that needs to be charged for separately as an add on. I also ask that this program should be amended within the next year to include scholarships for facility rentals and town led events, both of which are an integral part of our public service offerings. Thanks again to everyone whose hard work got us to this point, and I look forward to continuing this important work. Thank you.
No other email comments?
Um, let me just refresh the public comment email. Um, we do not have additional comments.
Thanks. With that, I'll bring it back to council uh, for discussion. I think we're looking for also a possible motion to approve the policy. One quick question. Um, on seniors, do we subsidize seniors also their programming? Can you just explain subsidizing versus scholarships, if that's a correct statement?
Um, I can try to address that to meet your needs. Um, right now, the programming for seniors is five dollars um, per class. So they're already um, having a very significantly reduced rate than compared to other classes, adults or or youth. Um, that doesn't factor in that um, that five dollars per student attending, say, a fitness class for seniors is a hundred percent going to the instructor. So the town is really not recouping any of that. Um, not only are they donating the the essentially the building space, but they're facilitating and and communicating with the instructors to bring them in and provide the service.
Okay, and that's for all seniors, right?
Yes.
Across the board in quarter Madera? Does that include Larkspur also, or just quarter Madera?
Um, anybody is welcome to come.
Okay, and so in the scholarship, would anybody then apply for a scholarship over, I'll say, the age of sixty five, if they're being subsidized, five dollar classes?
I mean, they could. If they didn't, if they wanted to have us, if they requested a subsidy that, um, you know, essentially paid for their five dollar class. Um, then yeah, that's, that's what we're including in our recommendation.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Bob, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead. Oh, I saw you have the green light on.
Yeah, sorry, I I I can't remember when I got it all for on. Yeah, I think we should absolutely do this. I want to make sure that we are serving the entire population of this town, and that's why I brought up the question about rental. Uh, we've got a significant population who is not making huge amounts of money in this town. You know, and they're working in daycare and other things. They're living in rental units. They weren't making their payments during COVID. And I think this program is really important to make sure that we continue to serve those people. And I think we should absolutely do this. I would move that we go ahead.
Thanks.
I could just make a, make a note before you take, make a motion. Um, the part about providing additional subsidy of the discussion, it's something that you could discuss at this time or when you're planning the budget going forward. Um, just something to consider. We wanted to have council aware that there's options that that the town could contribute more funding to this program. Outside of collecting donations for it.
Do you know how much funding you're looking for?
You don't have a dollar value, because right now we've only been giving an average of eight to ten thousand dollars out, but traditionally that's been for summer camps. And we would really like to broadly advertise this program for all programs.
Okay, so just out of curiosity, if you had the thirty thousand that was granted last year, would that work?
I think the thirty thousand that was granted last year would be great to go dedicated to the school district to collaborate with them to support the summer school program. Um, it would be great if there was additional money that was for the general scholarship program.
Okay, and what would that?
Come up with another thirty thousand, that would be awesome. But we'll take ten, we'll take whatever you want.
I I like, I like the ten number.
I also think we're here because with our uh, childcare program growing, we are getting more requests than we ever had in the past. They're seeing our program is very popular. It's a needing of people after school. We're getting those more and more requests now where we hadn't had that in the past. It's a needing of people after school. We are getting those more and more requests now where we hadn't had that pass where it's grown last year. It's getting very popular. It's a very quality program. People are seeing it, and the people who are needing those requests are now asking us for more requests for that program.
Okay.
So we anticipate those needs, questions still coming up during school year.
Okay, quick question is we may have to split this into, Adam, if we, we could just direct staff for funding on this, I'm trying to split this into two where it sounds like we're going to need definitely approve the policy.
Right.
But we can provide you directions, council saying that we're looking at, I'm just throwing out numbers at this point in time, thirty thousand dedicated towards um Larkspur Quarter Mirror Larkspur School District, and then another ten towards general pro, general um scholarships.
I'm happy to take that direction.
Okay.
It's helpful if that's.
Let me, we'll get other comments from council members and see which way you want to go with that.
I was just gonna say what I would do is I would push it back to staff. Daria come back to us and Adam and Ashley have them talk about it and come up with a number that works with the budget and that they think might work for the program, so that you only do it one time.
Instead of going back and forth.
Yeah, instead of going around and around, I mean, then make sure you get the right number. Because I think, I mean, it sounds like we want to do it. It sounds like it's needed. It sounds like it'll be used, so let's make sure we do it once and we do it right.
Okay.
And is there any harm in waiting? Are you no harm trying to issue scholarships that you don't have money for yet or anything? Okay.
Any other comments?
I can share my own personal experience and and thoughts on it. I mean, ultimately, I have five people in my household. I am low income in Quarter Madera. And uh during COVID, when I lost my job and my, we went into forbearance to be able to allow my children to still continue those, their programs uh in the community would have been incredibly valuable, and I think that it's a really important program uh in those kind of situations. And even if I have traditionally always been in the low income, I still pay my way when I can. Right? But to have that option so that there is nobody that goes unneglected that otherwise felt like they couldn't, I think is really important. For me, I feel like um it's like the sewer lateral program, right? Like we had this huge amount of grant money that we said, like, this would be the dream. And then basically, it's never even come close to that. So like we readjust it, right? So it's understanding, hey, we can set this and then basically revisit it after we've initiated the program, just like knowing that we're going to check in, that it isn't just set, so that if it's really, you know, and I would say definitely feedback from when, when, when the money's given, that it's really valuable to understand and talk to the care that the council wants to hear, that it's really servicing the community would be incredible to understand how much it should be supported, right? Is, are, are some of the things that I thought about, but in general, I feel like it's huge, you know, I think of single mothers that you know, are trying to work and that I know specifically could benefit from that, right? Um, and you know, it's it, and not just their children, but the mothers themselves, right? Or fathers or whatever that otherwise wouldn't have the luxury to do that, but it is important for their own personal health and well-being, and it just makes it a more vibrant community. So um, I can definitely make you know, the decision that this is good, so.
Um, did you make a motion, Bob, or?
I thought I did, but.
Okay.
Can you do it again?
Go ahead, make it more formal.
Move the way approve it. Well said, Charles. Thank you. Completely agree with you. Thank you.
Second.
There's a second. Is there any other discussion? Go ahead and call for the vote.
Uh, council member Beckman is absent. Council member Mongan?
Yes.
Council member Avasio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Casissa.
Uh, yes, two quick comments. One, if you can just make sure Julie at the chamber knows about this program so she can push it out to local businesses. Um, and the other thing is, this may be a little bit off target. Parking Rec Commission at some point in time may want to have a discussion because I mean it ties back to um the equity as far as the philosophy. I know when I served on Park and Rec, the philosophy was for Park and Rec to break even. Um, so we're not, you know, gouging people and trying to make a lot of money. I don't know where we're at with the the break-even point or anything like that. But you may want to go back and have Park and Rec Commission just have a discussion about what the philosophy is towards equity on that side of it, if that makes sense.
Do you suggest that being a commission discussion or di- or a direction from council of how, what you would like it to be?
Um, I guess it's my direction. Thanks, Bob, go ahead.
I was just gonna add it. If I can add a little history, I think that's a really good idea. Um. The reason we're in the direction we are was because at one point, it was the inverse.
Yeah.
In a big way, like, I mean, I think we're covering about thirty percent of our costs.
Far from five hundred thousand.
Subsidizing Parks and Rec hugely, and you know, now we've kind of corrected, and maybe you're right, maybe we've overcorrected and we should be figuring out what the appropriate number.
Yeah, yeah.
I need to touch that. I think this year is the first year in a long time that we haven't had a transfer from the general fund to offset the Parks and Rec Department.
Right, it's gonna be interesting. It happens year uh and budget-wise because we also shifted, I think, your salary over from the general fund. So now I think it's being paid out of Park and Rec. So I think it's going to give us a true picture of what that number really is, um, so the way it was before where it was somewhat distorted, given that parking rec salary is being paid out of general funding, not the parking rec fund.
Correct.
Okay, thanks. Thanks. Good job, by the way. Uh, one other question. Do you have any other policies out there that you, there's a gap that you know about?
I'm sure we're, we're still cleaning house. Let you know.
Thanks, appreciate it. With that, we'll go ahead and move to council reports. Uh, town manager report, Adam.
Just real quickly, um, just wanted to give you an update on town hall progress, considering we were pouring some concrete out there today. So the first concrete pour for some of the peers and the foundation going in on the site, there's a lot more activity over there, so we're keeping a close eye on uh, neighbor concerns, parking issues and whatnot, but we're, we're addressing those as we go and making sure that's a focus of our, of our work around the Willow and Taylor Pious neighborhood over there. Um, so exciting news, though. You'll start to see some after foundations and start to see the buildings start to go up. Um. Uh, just a note, uh, and I don't know if this is part of your report, but we'll, we'll have the office hours, we're with Supervisor Redoni on, on Thursday focused on Quarter Madera and Larkspur, so Mayor Casissa and myself will be attending that and uh talking all things Quarter Madera and good opportunity for the, for the community to speak to uh county-related issues as well.
Any update on Caltrans funding? And I know it's early. I know the whole thing's ongoing.
Come back with it actual, with a discussion item on that at some point in the near future, but.
Okay. All right, thanks. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, I'll come back to council reports, uh, Bob. Leela? Charles?
Uh, season opener with the Warriors tonight, but no reports.
No, no score, please. I'm recording it. Uh, and then I don't have any report either. We have the draft agenda for the next meeting. And if there's no further business coming for the council, I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting, and we do not have an S D two meeting tonight either, so we are adjourned, adjourned. Thanks, everybody.